Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. And we're here this afternoon for a work session. Our discussion item is the two thousand and twenty five Impact Fund Grant Program Recommendations. I'm Kristin Stevens, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. With me are my fellow commissioners, Commissioner John Kaphalas and Commissioner Jody Shadak McNally. We have our county manager with us, Loretta Volker. We have a variety of people from our Behavioral Health Services team, Laura Walker, our Human and Economic Health Director. So I will turn things over to Amy Martonis, our, is that fine, Behavioral Health Services Director, to kick us off for this afternoon's discussion. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners and County Manager. Again, my name is Amy Martonis, and I serve as the Director of Behavioral Health for Larimer County. We are pleased to be with you today to share an update on the two thousand and twenty five implementation of the Impact Fund Grant Program and to present the funding recommendations that have been shaped by our volunteer subject matter expert reviewers, as well as our executive review panel. These recommendations were brought to our Behavioral Health Policy Council earlier this week with unanimous support for advancement to you, our Board of Commissioners, today. Before inviting my colleague Jessica Plummer, who is our Impact Fund Grant Program Manager, to present, I wanted to take a moment to thank our community, whose support through the behavioral health sales tax dollars is what makes this program possible. I also wanted to express deep appreciation to the volunteers who serve as our subject matter experts, as well as to our Behavioral Health Policy Council members who invest their time and thoughtful consideration towards ensuring a thoughtful, transparent, and equitable grant-making process. The Impact Fund Grant Making Program is a true collaboration, and it is facilitated by Jessica Plummer, who has skillfully and effectively managed this program. And I turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Again, Jessica Plummer, Program Manager for Larimer County's Behavioral Services Department, and I oversee our Impact Fund Grant Program. On the agenda is what we have for you today. We're going to walk you through our evaluation process, as well as changes we made for two thousand and twenty five. We're going to talk about the application and recommendation overview, some data and trends we're seeing in our grant program over time, as well as the funding recommendations by award type. We're going to answer any questions, and then hopefully get some direction for next steps. I'll just mention here that these are links to our website, so we do have our evaluation process online. What we'll go over in the next slide or two are much more detailed versions of what we have, but we have a high-level summary, so that applicants and anybody looking into our grant program can see what that website looks like, and has that high-level overview of who's involved and the timeline. We also have a new webpage this year for the changes that were implemented in two thousand and twenty five. So the things that we came and talked to you about back in February and April are up there on our website. The two main changes this year being our renewal process that we piloted for two thousand and twenty five, as well as some changes to our budget amounts. So we'll talk about those in more detail. So I know this is a lot on this one slide. Hopefully, you can see it and read it on the documents that you have printed out. For the Commissioners that have been involved in this process for the last several years, this process really hasn't changed very much. And it'll be on the next slide when we talk about the new pilot renewal process where things have changed, but I'll go over this, you know, in case there's anybody online that's listening that isn't aware of our grant evaluation process. We had applications due in June this year, and when they are submitted, they go through our pre-screen status. So basically, our staff goes and reviews them to make sure that they are complete. If folks have uploaded a document that is incorrect or uploaded the wrong one, we will follow up to make sure they have all the documents completed, so that it can be moved through the review process. We also have our staff looking at the initial review process, so looking for alignment and capacity, alignment with our funding priorities, our ballot language, and do they have the capacity to take on the work that's being proposed. So there is a financial component there where we do evaluate the financial health of the organization, as well as the budget for things that they are proposing. At that point, if it passes through to the next round, it goes through our subject matter expert panel. So our SME panel, our external grant reviewers. We had twenty on that panel this year, and they review that for context and impact. So what context is this program or project having in the community? And what is the likelihood of success if it's being implemented? And what kind of impact would it have in the community? And so we have there listed the different items that they score on, which is context, collaboration, health equity, proven or possibility of success, and impact for the cost being proposed. And so there are scoring rubrics and measurements we use for both of those phases. Those four key things, alignment, capacity, context, and impact are all up on our website. So applicants who are applying are well aware of that evaluation process and what we're looking for in an application. At that point, we bring it to our executive review panel, and I should say, before we move on, there are three external reviewers per application, per grant application. So those three reviewers independently review each application. They score it. They make their funding recommendation with a lot of their narrative notes on why they've made that funding recommendation, to either fund or do not fund. Those scores are averaged and brought to our executive review panel. So each grant reviewer may see eight to ten applications. The executive panel sees all seventy applications. And so at that point, usually, there's more being recommended for funding than we have funding to give. We have two point eight million dollars allocated and three million dollars budgeted for this year. And so our executive review panel also independently scored, reviewed, and made their funding recommendations, and then came for an in-person, all-day event to talk through what those recommendations were and get consensus on those funding recommendations to fill that portfolio, to look at not only the new applications coming through this year, but also the renewal applications, and make sure that we were having a balanced portfolio in that recommendation. Then we brought it to our Behavioral Health Policy Council on Monday. We had some rich discussions on not only this process and the pilot renewal process, but also some of the post-award evaluations that our department does. So that was a really interesting conversation that I think we can highlight more in the future as well. This part of the year and where we are in the process is about the applications, but we can do a better job of educating them on the things we're doing on the back end as well. They are available on our website, all the post-award information. So interim reports, final reports, those are there in public for all the grantees or organizations that are looking to apply. So I guess it was just important for us to highlight that those things did exist and that they were available. So here we are today with you all, the Board of County Commissioners, to hopefully get some administrative direction and to hopefully bring this forth for administrative approval and administrative matters as a next step. And at the bottom there is our decline process. So we had told you last year that we were sort of piloting this new process where if folks are ineligible, they can get notified earlier in the process that they're not moving forwards. And so we did implement that this year. There was only one that didn't really pass through pre-screen or the initial review because they weren't eligible. We did call them to ensure that the documents they uploaded were correct, and they said, "Yeah, we knew we weren't eligible. We were going to try anyway." So I said, "Well, you're going to get a decline email, and that is why." They said, "All right, we understand." But most everything else passed through the next review process. And so we have, if everything passed through our initial review, there weren't any red flags or anything that we couldn't fund. It moved forward, and all of them moved forward this year to the next phase, to our subject matter expert review panel. If all three subject matter expert reviewers said, "We don't recommend funding for this," those grants also fell out. So we did have five this year that did fall out of that process. And I do have a slide in the next few that shows you how those numbers go through this process. So we'll go through that in a little bit more detail. But the rest of that is, folks will be notified about awards or declines after they are approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So that was the process that we've been using for the last several years. The one part that was new for this year again was we were piloting this renewal process, which we came and talked to you about back in February, back in April. So you can see you're up there on the top left to review the goals and the purpose of the pilot, some of the criteria that we were using. Doing that, it identified that there was fifteen organizations that were eligible for renewal. So after we met with you in April, we reached out to those fifteen organizations and said you were eligible for this streamlined renewal process. We had a slightly streamlined or alternative application. And so we did that in the end of May and reviewed that in June, so that due diligence and impact for our initial review, our staff reviewed those. So we still asked for some of the basic information that we'd asked for all grantees, which is all their financial documentation, asking if there was any significant changes that were happening to the program or to the organization, that they were still in good compliance with everything that we had. And then we also added an additional component, which is the organizational impact review. So basically, doing a lot of storytelling, telling us how these funds have impacted their organization over the last five years. So those folks that were eligible for renewal were organizations that have received at least five years of grant funding from us. So they've had, they have that information to be able to tell that story over time. And so we had Madeline as part of that process in terms of helping to capture those stories, and we have a mechanism for sharing out that information this fall, once these awards are recommended. So that was part of that process, and then we brought it all. Those last three are the same. It's kind of packaged together with everything else. It brought through to the executive review, to our Behavioral Health Policy Council, and again, to our Board of County Commissioners. So as a reminder, some of the administrative changes we made for two thousand and twenty five, these are the things that we proposed doing back in April, and these are the things that we have accomplished. So they have check marks next to all of them. We did increase the time to review. We shifted that date up two weeks. That did allow our staff and grant reviewers to have an extra week each to review, so that June thirteenth deadline was, worked out well. And then we increased flexibility in funding while maintaining good fiscal stewardship. So we did get approval from our county attorney to update that language in our grant agreement. We all know that a thousand dollars doesn't go very far these days anymore, and so having a little bit more flexibility in the budget was helpful in terms of not having the administrative burden of going through a formal amendment process every time they need to make a small change. So that will potentially be some time savings in the future, too, that we have not yet captured. But the third one is provide more support for budget and objective formats. And so we did offer, in addition to the two webinars we do every year, we offered two more. One was specific towards the budget. One was specific towards objectives. Folks really enjoyed that and appreciated having those. We also added two coffee and connection events where organizations could come together and ask questions to me in person, but there was at least ten different organizations at both events, and they were all networking with each other. It was very informal, just at a coffee shop, and so it was loud, but everybody was talking to one another. And so that is something that turned out really well, and so I think we're going to probably continue in future years. We streamlined our grant requests and reduced partial awards. Our goal was to reduce partial awards by fifty percent, and we actually reduced that by seventy-eight percent. So instead of having twenty-two partial awards, which was more, just over half the funding portfolio last year, we got that down to five. So we were pretty excited about that. The time savings between our staff, as well as grantees as we go in through contracting means we don't have to redo a lot of the scope of work and the proposals that were being proposed, and have to scale them back to meet the funding amounts that were being proposed. amounts that were being proposed. So part of the help there was we created four new budget tiers. And so instead of being able to request anything from $10,000 to $250,000, we recognized most of our funding was anywhere between 25 and 100. There was only a few that were over that probably saw a slight reduction in the funds that they were getting. But we weren't funding anything over 150, and we hadn't been doing that for a couple of years due to the quality of applications that we see, the number of organizations that are recommended for funding every year. And so this really streamlined that process for, I think, applicants, but also reviewers, because it made it very clear what could be awarded and helped reduce, I think, a lot of the partial awards as well. Again, I think I had shown a slide, too, that I think 68 or 70% of our partial awards were coming from those really high dollar amount requests that we just couldn't fund and don't really make sense for a one-year grant program, which, as we've talked to you about, some of our other initiatives for that longer term, bigger funding, we do have some other initiatives to address some of those needs, but it's just not through this annual grant program. And then we addressed requests for sustainable funding and reduced workload. Our goal was to reduce workload overall by 20%, and we just blew that out of the water. We were only estimating, you know, our time savings because we had no idea how much time it would save the organizations that were applying. And I reached out to the 15 organizations that were eligible for new renewal, and 14 of them could get back to me and give me a number. One of them said, oh, somebody's on sabbatical. And then we had a lot of staff turnover, so I can't really tell you. But of the 14 organizations that responded, they saved their own time by 123 hours. So it was, it was a lot of time. And there's going to be more time savings as we go through the contracting process, not to have to redo a lot of work because of not a lot of partial awards. And so that was a huge success and something we'll take into consideration as we're looking at potentially doing this pilot or doing it for another year, extending that renewal process and what that might mean. Any questions so far as I keep going along?
Any questions?
Okay. So this is what I was talking to you about, of walking through the process with the number of grants that we saw this year. So we had 70 applications submitted. So that was 55 competitive applications, as well as the 15 renewal applications. As I mentioned, we had one that was not eligible, didn't move forward to initial review. But we had 54 go through that initial review process, as well as the 15 renewals. They went through our subject matter expert panel. And so out of that 54, like I said, five of them had all three independent reviewers say, do not fund this one. And so they did not move forward in the process. And all 15 renewals met the requirement of having five or plus more years of SME review. So they've been through this process, you know, multiple times and have continuously been scored very high and recommended and prioritized for funding. Then we brought it to our executive review panel. So those 49 applications were reviewed with the 15 renewals, and 27 were recommended for award in addition to those 15 renewals. And so the total for the portfolio this year recommended for award was 42 organizations. And we are bringing that forward through this process and then hopefully for approval. So overall, we had 70 grant applications from 65 unique organizations. We did have a couple different grant applications from different departments within, like Colorado State University or University of Colorado Denver. So they're not unique organizations. They're, you know, departments are very siloed and very different. But we tend to only have on our website, say, that we want one application from one organization. We don't want an organization submitting two or three or four. But we make exceptions for institutes of higher education because we know that those organizations are huge and those departments can be very siloed. So we did have 65 unique organizations submit for $5,175,000 in requests. So with the reduction in the cap, that also, we anticipated seeing a reduction in the amount being requested. If you recall, last year, we received $7.4 million in requests for funding. So I think reducing that cap helped reduce some of the award asks. And we do have a slide on how that trends over time, so we'll be able to look at that in a little bit more detail. So overall, there's 42 applications recommended for $3 million for award. And so as I mentioned, BHS has $3 million approved in the budget, but only $2.8 million is currently allocated for award by the board. And so an additional $200,000 requires board approval. So that will be part of the request for this year. So we have the option, we broke it down into two parts, tier one requests. So if you only want to award the $2.8 million, which we have allocated, that would be 23 of the competitive awards, plus the 15 renewal applications. If we want to increase the additional $200,000, we have four additional awards that we'd like to recommend for that portfolio. So this is a snapshot of the history of the grant program and the awards to date. So this was helpful to talk to our policy council about because we have new members coming on board every few years. So it's always good to review and refresh where this has been and see where it's going. So back in 2019 was the first year, this department was really established, and we got $1 million out the door really quickly to 29 different organizations for $1 million. Eleven was through an invitation round, the other 18 through an open competitive round. In 2020, we had 34 go through the normal grant cycle. We also carved out about $115,000 in crisis response funds at the beginning of COVID. In that year, we increased our allocation from $1.1 million to $2.5 million. In 2021, we made 38 awards for just over $2.5 million. In 2022, we did a similar type request where we did the tier one and tier two, looking to increase our allocation from $2.5 million to $2.8 million. And so we did get that increase back in 2022. In 2023, we awarded 35 grants for just over $2.8 million. And in 2024, we did 41 grant awards for $3 million. And we were able to do this because we had one or two grants that returned some money. One wasn't able to move forward with what they had originally proposed due to circumstances outside their control. And so we were able to recoup those funds and then redistribute them through that grant cycle. And so we were able to do just over $3 million last year. In 2025, you can see we have our tier one requests, our tier two, and then our renewals. So they're broken up in just a few more subcategories. Overall, $3 million portfolio. And again, the $2.8 million is allocated, and our $3 million is budgeted. So we are requesting this year a $200,000 increase. We are not asking for an increase in that grant fund in perpetuity. This is just a one-time thing as we are moving forward with some other initiatives for our multi-year funding for 2026 and some other investment strategies. And so just want to make sure that it's clear. It's just a one-time thing for right now.
Any questions? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Jessica, I did, I've gotten to have, see this multiple times now. But just for my colleagues, I don't know if you're going to do that or maybe highlight the tier two ones in the pack, or which name them out, and, or do we name them out or just kind of share what they are, and maybe just to help understand the why of what the recommendation? Would that be appropriate to ask?
Sure. Yeah, I don't have them working out, but it's been written off.
I think I had a different list where it kind of highlighted them. So I just, I know I saw that before. But if you wouldn't mind, I think my colleagues might maybe understand. If that would be okay, I think it might be helpful. Thank you.
I mean, if we're not comfortable pulling out individual organizations, maybe we can just talk about, you know, in generalities? Yeah, okay, sure.
Right.
Right, there's some sensitivities around it.
Well, that's why I was asking, maybe you could highlight the areas, the areas where they're, what they're through, because I think that was also maybe important. So I just wanted, that's why I was asking, because to understand the tier two request for the $200,000, I think it might just, you know, just kind of share the four. And I think, and I'm sorry to throw that curveball, but I was just kind of looking through what this is, and I just thought maybe my colleagues would.
Yeah, kind of what, what group?
What area, what group, yeah. But I think that might be, and I understand the sensitivity. That's why I kind of asked the question I did.
Yeah, I turned it off. Yes, there was two in expansion of child and youth services. This one in services in diverse settings, and one in alternatives and interventions in criminal justice. So across different categories.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And if I may, to the board, in considering the executive review discussion of the funding cutoff threshold, this seemed like a natural line of demarcation. So the difficult deliberations, there was a point of demarcation that these four organizations were really difficult to assess and make a recommendation towards not funding. And the consensus for the other deliberations, while difficult and still representing good work, represented that that line of demarcation and where we felt comfortable making a recommendation to the board, bringing that forward for your consideration.
Thank you, Amy. That's, both of you, that's exactly what I was hoping to hear. And I think I had heard that from you before. So I wanted my colleagues to know this was, it's not trying to sneak it in few, just really, this was a strong recommendation consideration that these were going to be hard to say no to. So I just wanted my colleagues to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the additional $200,000, I mean, that, I mean, budget-wise, that doesn't affect?
Correct. We have $3 million in our 2025 operational budget for the department, for the grant program.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think so. I think we're ready to keep going.
Okay. As I mentioned, we've been tracking some data over time with the amount requested. And so you can see how that started to really increase in 2023 and 2024. We received a much higher number of applications those years. And anecdotally, you know, that's potentially due to some ARPA cliff dollars going away and people seeking out more funding. We saw more applications, but I wouldn't say that they were higher quality. Some were wayward. So we were getting more wayward applications that weren't directly tied to behavioral health than we were with the 70 that we are getting now. And we did know that by reducing the amount that people could request, that we would see a reduction. We just didn't know exactly how much. So we can see that we're back down to the 5.1, $5.2 million mark there. You can see some of the average amount requested, median amounts, the number of applications, the number of awards, the number of declines. And again, the one that's highlighted and kind of circled there in red is the number of partials, really reducing that this year, because you could see it was starting to get to be half of the portfolio was partial awards. And so we really wanted to set the expectations, right, of what we can fund, what we are funding, and make those new budget tiers more accurately reflect the funding amounts that we have available. As a little side note on here, the 2019 and 2020 weren't really comparable years, which is why we don't have that on here. And so they just been excluded from this list. But, yeah.
Commissioner? I asked this question earlier this week, and I think you did such a phenomenal job. I think you also did, Amy. But just as we're talking about this in a public work session, just like we had done before, me and my colleagues to know the outstanding and very exemplary work that you're all doing, especially Jessica. She goes out and she meets with, helping with these coffees and helping individuals with the grant process, but also how you hold them accountable to meeting the metrics or their objectives and kind of that robust accountability piece. And I was hoping, just for the public to understand, maybe expand on that about, we are expecting metrics to be met and some progress and make this means making a difference. So I thought if you wouldn't mind maybe sharing a little bit of those details, I think it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. And that's what I was alluding to at the beginning with having that rich discussion with our Behavioral Health Policy Council, is they were really interested in not only what we're doing on the front end, but also what we're doing on the backend. And I guess we just really haven't had an opportunity to showcase that. So thank you for the opportunity. We have just gone through interim and final reports, and so we review those quarterly. So all the grants start either on October or January. So they're kind of on a similar timeline. And so we usually get interim reports at the six-month mark and at the one-year mark. So about 30 days after those periods are over, they're allowed to report. And so they check in. The interim report is not as administratively burdensome, is a check-in on progress to see how things are going. Folks will reach out and say, hey, things are going really well, or here's where we're a little bit behind. They might need to, this is the opportunity to do some rebudgeting or do an amendment for no-cost extension. So we do those as well. And so I'm actively involved with each organization. As they submit, everybody has been submitting their reports on time, which is great. I don't have to follow up and knock on people's doors to make sure that they're submitting their reports. We do notify organizations 60 days out that the report is due, another 30 days out. And then if they don't submit, they get an automated reminder to say, hey, this is past due. So we have a lot of safeguards in place to make sure that reporting is timely. And then we have an evaluation process on the backend, too, of, we have goal amounts that they put in their objective tables when they apply. And so they measure and report against those measures at the interim report and the final report timeline. And again, those interim and final reports, the formats are all available on our website, so people know what that is ahead of time. We do ask for demographic data and financial information. So if anything is, we have an accountant who helps also review those financial documentation. And if there's anything that is spent inappropriately, we have the ability to recoup those dollars. If funds are unspent at the end of the grant period, sometimes there's a few thousand dollars left. Part of the terms of the grant agreement are to return those funds if they remain unspent. And so we do recruit some small dollar amounts from organizations that may have not spent it entirely. But that's a very small few. And do you want to add to something else?
Yeah, I would just add, at the next work session at 2:30, we'll be highlighting some of this data in a little bit more detail, if it's of interest. And just a note that as of today, with interim and final reports for our 2024 grantees, 100% of our grantees are in good standing with BHS and grant compliance.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have some award data and trends over time. So we call these the targeted areas. These are what have been identified by our two advisory groups, both the technical advisory committee, as well as our consumer advisory committee. They fall under our Behavioral Health Policy Council. So those are folks with technical or professional experience in behavioral health. And we also have folks with lived experience on those panels. And so back in 2021, they established these as the main areas of focus. And so we have care coordination and system integration. We have workforce expansion and support, alternatives and interventions in criminal justice, services in diverse settings, usually meaning peer support, non-clinical services, equine therapy, and art, and things of that nature would fall in that category. We have expansion of child and youth services, so organizations that are serving not just youth, but families as well. And then we have our responsive category, which is anything that doesn't fall in these, you know, particular target areas, but are also important to fund in the behavioral health space. So we know not everything fits in there. And so I believe it was last year in 2024, our advisory groups recommended that we, our portfolio, have at least 70% of our funding going towards those targeted areas. This year, we do have 89% going to those targeted areas. So we do want to leave some space open and available for responsive grant making, in case there's anything new coming out that's not, doesn't necessarily fit in this area, but want to make sure that is, if it's, there's an opportunity for them to be funded. And so you see that breakdown or how that is trending over time. And for the most part, things are fairly consistent. I would say the two maybe trends that we're seeing is care coordination going down a little bit. That is being taken up by some of the care coordination that is being provided at Longview at our facility. And then services in diverse settings, that is the one that is going up, the trajectory of that is going up. And so a lot of that is attributed to peer support services. So again, the non-clinical services. So we have that nice balance in the continuum of care, not just at Longview with clinical services, but also out in the community, having folks with lived experience, providing more peer support in the community.
Thank you, Jessica. It looks like Commissioner Capulis has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, colleagues. Can you expand on what we mean by systems in? integration?
Sure. We've had a few things in that category. Right now, we have a grant from last year that is doing work in building the systems and the data to share MOUs, to share data across systems. So that would be one example of systems integration. I don't know if you want to go into more detail.
Yeah, when we think about all the complex systems that intersect in supporting both individuals and families, that could include data systems, referral processes, intentional collaboration, efforts to streamline those processes, or shared efforts, such as multidisciplinary teams working together in coordinated care.
Does it include an integrated healthcare setting where medical care is provided as well as behavioral?
Some of our grantees have fallen into that category, yes.
And I'm seeing the four that are in that category. So they, this is what they do.
Yes, one of the grantees would fall in that integrated medical care category for integration.
Thanks.
Yes.
Okay. So at the bottom here, we just have another different way to break these down. So 30%, 36% of the organizations, the number of organizations funded were renewals, 36 were continuations. So anything that is in its second, third, fourth, maybe even the fifth year of being funded, falls in that space. We have new programs, which are organizations that BHS has funded in the past, but might be proposing, you know, some new program at their organization. And then we have new organizations, which to us just means they're they're new grantees to BHS. I have definitions on another slide. So overall, this is where the funding has come in for the 2025 award recommendations. And so you can see what categories were getting the most applications and where organizations have been recommended for award and recommended for decline. I don't know if you have any questions on this. We have a different way to show that on the next slide as well. Yes.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Thanks. Jessica, is this the adjusted slide?
This is the adjusted slide, yep.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes. So in total, there was, what, $5,175,000 in requests and $3 million recommended for funding. So you can see the declines are actually smaller than the amount of award, because we're declining 2.1 million essentially, 2.2. So, yes.
And I'm assuming, I haven't read through the emails that Ryan had just sent out. Was that included in the update? Was that?
It was.
Thank you. I haven't got to read that yet. I apologize, but I'm assuming that's what that was. All right. Thank you for your work. I appreciate it.
Okay. So this is how it looks broken down into kind of the portfolio for the year. We have, again, like I said, 89% going towards those targeted areas with the goal of being over 70%. We have a breakdown here of where the geographic reach is for the awards that are being recommended. And these were self-reported by organizations in their application of where they are serving folks in the community. And so what we are seeing is more specificity year over year about where folks are identifying clients. So I don't know if there's, they're doing a better job of tracking that information. Every year that we get this, we seem to see more and more. I don't know if that necessarily means that more services are being provided, or if they're getting better at tracking where those services are, because it is something that we are tracking and measuring and ask for in some of our final reporting. And so the things on the right-hand side, the Bellevue, Drake, Glen Haven, Livermore, Masonville, are not things that were identified in the past. They're getting more specific in where they're calling out folks that they're serving.
A simple question, I think. The numbers represent the number of folks served?
It doesn't recommend the number of folks served. Somebody in our team compiles this, and this is what has been identified in their application of saying, we serve folks in this community, and it's a count, essentially.
Count of what?
Yeah. The organizations and the communities that they identify serving in.
The number of organizations. So for instance,
LaPorte has 12 organizations?
12 organizations report serving clients in LaPorte. Yes.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Okay.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, I've been watching this and trying to, you know, kind of tracking this from day one. And to see, we always said we were trying to make, increase access and intervention, and early intervention throughout the entire county. And to see this kind of progress to really being countywide is just amazing, outstanding. And I think I just want to commend you all for being able to track that better and for helping organizations be able to report that out better, so we can show that. Because I think that's important for our taxpayers, holding accountable and making sure everyone in the county feels this is serving the whole county, not just the two, you know, Loveland, Fort Collins. I hear that a lot. And then I can pull, I pull this out in the annual report and stuff and say, no, we're trying to get out into the organization. And so first, I want to comment on that, that I appreciate this kind of data and information sharing. Secondly, I have a question about Laramie County, the 31. That is a big box, and I'm wondering, can you help expand, and I think I know the answer to this, but I would thought this might be a good public, for the public session. Is that unincorporated, Laramie County, or is this, how is that, how is that defined? Is it 31 because they're serving countywide, or is it unincorporated? What does Laramie County mean? If you could help me expand or define that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Commissioner. Laramie County represents services being provided countywide. So that might include telehealth services, that might include in locations across Laramie County, that might include mobile response, different things like that. But it's 31 organizations providing services countywide.
Fantastic. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Just to sort of add on to the question, yeah, I think this is great that we're getting to places. And I'm wondering how often, or are we tracking how often people get, services get to people in those areas, or they just, there's people from those areas that have to come to a different place to get in. So, I mean, this is, that's probably a parking lot question, but, you know, really concerned about sort of transportation and what that looks like, and what kind of barrier that that still might be. I think that that's just, I work in the, you know, I do a lot of work in transportation. And so, you know, I know there's services, especially for older adults, ride-share and different kinds of services that are provided through the county. But, you know, we're always kind of looking at ways to do any kind of micro-mobility, or van pool, or something to make sure that we're trying, that people from more outlying areas can get in here for service. So I guess both ways of, you know, are we, are some of these programs able to get services out to those people? Obviously, telehealth-wise, they are. But are there any kind of vans or, you know, mobile access? And then are people still struggling with getting into, into the cities and towns for services?
Yeah, I would say thank you for the question, Commissioner, and highlighting the important distinction between access to services located elsewhere versus access to services located in your incorporated or unincorporated parts of the county, and recognizing that telehealth is a valued asset. But technology and access tech technology can also be a barrier. So we see the geographical presence of organizations expanding as a growth edge and a continued priority in this work, in wanting to continue to support increasing access. I can't offer you today more detail on how many of the organizations are specifically located in the different communities across our county, but it is something we continue to ask for and look at on our applications, and can deeper dive into that as this program continues to move forward with that shared goal of expanding reach.
And I would add, just going through all of the different applications without naming them, there are probably two or three that are coming to mind at the moment, where they identified in their application that services were very limited within their rural area, and that their project or program specifically addresses that historic lack of access. So whether citing, you know, housing costs as an issue to draw professionals to their area or otherwise, these are organizations that have either a site designated to this area or have in their plan staffing specific to being able to reach individuals in that specific community who have otherwise not had access to care in their, in their area of residence.
Thank you. And, you know, I always think about extension and how they can be a partner, because, you know, they're a trusted partner in a lot of rural areas. And, you know, I guess, yeah, I think we're all kind of struggling with how to do this and make sure people get served. So just as much as you can, let us know how, you know, if there's, you know, things that we can help with that, so.
Commissioner, I see that maybe Laura Walker wanted to add. Did you want to? Oh, okay, thank you. I just saw your movement. Sorry. Thanks.
Commissioner Kavals?
I have two additional questions based on the conversation we're having. Going back to the question regarding Laramie County and the number 31, since all of the communities identified are in Laramie County, is there overlap here, or does that 31 exclude the other numbers, for example, in the 24 organizations serving people in Fort Collins?
Yeah, thank you for the question, sir. These categories aren't exclusive, meaning there can be some overlap. So it's possible that an organization identifies they serve all of Laramie County, but they don't further distinguish that. They would be represented in that box, rather than some applicants designate Loveland, Johnstown, Livermore as the areas that they serve. So it's not distinct. It's a snapshot of the reach as our grantees report in their application process.
Thank you. And my second question, and thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Amy. And that is, you know, for example, as I'm understanding this Red Feather Lakes, the number 10 means that there are 10 organizations that are serving folks in that area. Is there a way at some point in this process to know what those organizations are? Which organizations are doing that? Is that a?
Yes, sir. Our business operations coordinator, Ryan Barstow, thoughtfully went through every application to pull this data as a manual process. So that tracking is a manual one, but we could offer that level of specificity if it would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful, especially for, in particular up in that area, trying to, and actually in LaPorte for that matter, trying to figure out more opportunities for folks to have access to healthcare and not have to drive all the way into Fort Collins or places like that. Thank you kindly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good to keep moving, Jessica. Thank you.
Let me put the microphone back on. On your screen, we have the definitions for how we broken down which awards fall into each category. So I think I had mentioned on a previous slide, new grantee is a first-time organization that has been awarded by behavioral services. We consider a new program, an organization that we've worked with previously, but the program has changed. They're doing some new initiative continuation. It means something that BHS has funded in the past that we're continuing to fund either for a second, third, or fourth year. And the renewal is, refers to our pilot process for 2025. Organizations that had five or more years of funding and that met our additional criteria for that streamlined process application. In your packets, you have a little bit more specificity on who those organizations are. So without naming them, some of the new areas that we're looking to award are one, focusing on seniors with enrichment programs to decrease social isolation in older adults and do some education support for their caregivers. We have another organization that is going to be training some case managers in trust-based relational intervention for some caregiver training as well. That is a trend that we're seeing and we're hearing from actually some of our stakeholder sessions, is caregiver training. There's a lot of stress and burnout in those areas. And so there's, trust-based relational intervention is a evidence-based program that has been utilized by a number of our grantee organizations that is proving to be effective. And then we have another organization looking to do motivational interviewing for training 150 of their staff, which will allow them to bill Medicaid and family-first funding in the future. So by having that training, they're able to build another funding source in the future. We also have another organization coming into Loveland to help do some comedy workshops to help reduce stigma for the LGBTQ+ population, people of color and underserved folks in Loveland. And then we have another one that's looking to expand peer-led recovery in high-risk industries that report a lot of substance use or abuse. Construction industry, food services industry, manufacturing, healthcare, and Latino communities. And so they do have a bilingual component to their program. So we're excited to see that. That's not something BHS has, not that we haven't funded before, but we actually just haven't seen an application come through to say, hey, we're going to target these industries because we know that there's a need here. And so that was really exciting to see, and that was prioritized for award. Some of the new programs we have are highlighting some bilingual licensed family therapists up in Estes Park, intensive outpatient treatment for justice-involved clients, so 12-week programs for people that are incarcerated, both individual and group therapy sessions. Another organization is looking to hire a part-time behavioral health clinician to help folks, people who use drugs, to have that wraparound support when they're getting other treatment. So more like in that integrated care setting. We have some sexual violence training in all three school districts being proposed, trauma-informed training for staff at secondary schools in one of the school districts. So we have a lot of new and exciting things coming through the grant program this year. We do have a nomination for our Gary A. Darling Award, for those that are unfamiliar. Gary A. Darling was, served as Laramie County Sheriff's Office for 30 years, and then the Criminal Justice Division, and served as a member of the Mental Health Substance Use Alliance, and on the guidance team to get this ballot initiative passed. And so in 2020, we started an award in his name to honor his service and help getting this ballot initiative passed. And that first year, it was a $50,000 award, and it was a separate application. And after that first year, we decided to streamline that process. We said, no, we'll have it be submitted. We don't want to create extra work for organizations to submit a separate application. We have this targeted area now of alternatives and interventions in criminal justice. We'll just nominate the best one that is worthy of this award each year. And so each year, we've actually had the honor and privilege of awarding an organization for that Gary A. Darling distinction. So it's an honorary award, and we have one identified in that category. And you have the details on that in your packet. So we're excited about that, because there's some joint funding involved in getting that program launched and off the ground. So it is a pilot, and we're excited to see that come through. Any questions?
Any questions for questions? Any questions? Commissioner Kavals?
I don't have any questions. I do, if time allows, I'll offer a few comments.
Yeah, please do. Offer some comments and.
Well, thank you. I am genuinely impressed. I suspect we all are. The level of detail, thoughtfulness, engagement of other partners, community folks, very meticulous process, certainly dot i's, cross t's all over the place. So I just think that's really important when we're looking at public dollars and we're trying to be as accountable, you know, with these public funds that are invested back in our community. So I am genuinely impressed, and I say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Just once again, extremely grateful for, you know, I work with you all throughout all these years, and every year, this program just continues to be refined and going forward. And with the addition of Madeline collecting the stories and Amy coming on board. Thank you, Laura, for your leadership there. It's just really been great to see the teamwork and the working together to make this process that we have made it less work for our volunteer reviewers, which was outstanding feedback from that. But also, the workload was tremendously reduced. And then also, just looking at how we eliminate kind of those extra ask and bringing those, that reduction in the partials was pretty of special note as well. I think as we go forward, you know, we're trying to make sure we're being targeted and also moving the needle and making sure we're having access to all the areas that we need. I really appreciate this detail and information, and just the way I really appreciate this detail and information and just the way you all work together. It's pretty outstanding. So I'm just thankful to be working alongside you with this important work. I also wanted to make sure to give you congratulations and gratitude for your award that you received from the Caro Behavioral Health Administration, and Commissioner Smith gave you all as a team, the Behavioral Health Champion, and we're called out for your work, and I wanted to make a special note of that. As I said, it's, the award is a symbol of our community's deep commitment, deep and unique commitment to one another and a testament to our vision of Larimer County where people are empowered in supporting and accessing a full range of behavioral health services that promote the well-being of all. And so I wanted to just congratulate you for that. That's really, just probably a small recognition for all the work you do, but you really do well together, and I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for your work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. It looks like there's a couple of questions you want to know from us is, should we move forward with these recommendations for the Admin Matters meeting? And then would we prefer for this to be a discussion item or consent agenda item? So we'll try to get consensus around that.
Yes, to moving forward, and I believe it is important enough that it should be a discussion item.
Commissioner Shadak McNally?
Certainly, after many hours looking through this, I'm very much in support of the recommendations to move forward for Admin Matters, and I'm open to whatever my colleagues would like to have. And I also want to honor and respect the staff's time, but I'm open to whatever my colleagues wish to do with that. Thank you.
I am supportive of moving forward, certainly, and I do agree that a discussion item might be nice for just to talk about, you know, your process and just so people understand that. But thank you for all the recommendations and all the hard work, and really happy that you got to a place where you're able to streamline the work and less hours for both the applicants and the people looking at the applications. And just thank you to you and everyone who participated in doing that. That's, it's a lot of work, and it's hard. Those are hard decisions to make because there are a lot of worthy folks doing really great work in our community. So to whittle those down, I know, is not easy. Is there anything else we wanted to add? Okay, I will, not to cut off the conversation, but it is 2:27, and we do have a second group coming in, and they'll need a little time to get ready, and we'll need, you know, our TV folks will have the time that they need. So at 2:27, we're adjourned, and thank you all for being here.
Thank you.